I'd like to call this meeting to order again. What I'd like to do is to go over the simple agenda that we will be following this evening. Because there has been substantial concern among the community about the appointment of the new principal of the high school, I think it's important that we all understand the procedure that was followed, have a chance to have the superintendent make some data after your remarks, and then open the floor to public comments. I'd like to be very, very clear that this is not a session, or isn't designed as a session, where people can make derogatory remarks about anybody. It is a session where you can express your opinions, but if they get too personal, or if they infringe on somebody else's rights, I feel it is my responsibility to cut that off. There will be other opportunities for people to express their concerns, as many people have, but I don't want this meeting to turn into a situation where people are trying to say that someone said something to somebody at some time, or somebody made a comment, and I don't want to find that we have to justify or debunk that sort of statement. I hope that's clear. I'm trying to be as fair as I possibly can, but I don't want to see this turned into a situation where we could do some personal harm in making some comments that would be long lasting to individuals. So, generally speaking, what I'm going to do is just give you a very brief summary of the process that was going on in the hiring of the new principal of the school. Then the superintendent will have some opening comments, he'll make some introductions to Glenda, and then the ball's on his court, and we'll see what happens. After Glenda has had a chance to address those people here and on television, we will open the floor for general comments. So let me just tell you, when it became obvious that we needed to go through the process of finding a new principal, generally what you do is you go through one of the hiring agencies that is particularly noted for placing people in positions of responsibility, School Spring, which is a national organization that does that sort of thing. We put that ad in the paper, we had seventeen or eighteen responses to that ad. It was then the responsibility of the administration to take a look at those eighteen, seventeen, eighteen different resumes, and see which of those really were qualified or could possibly fill the position here. It was their charge to bring to a committee, a committee made up, a search committee made up of teachers, administrators, members of the community, to review those people that were recommended by the administration after they had gone through the resumes. They presented four candidates to the search committee. I think they actually presented five, but one withdrew before we had, before the committee had a chance to interview them. A schedule was set out where each of those individuals came in and spent some time with the committee, answered a set of questions that were given to all of them, so that there was some equity about how each was treated. They, those individuals, as they came through, did that, they made a short comment, and they also were asked to submit a written form. When that process was through, the committee then met, and it was their responsibility to forward the finalists, those people that they felt could fill the position, to the superintendent to make his choice. The state is very specific about the procedure that should be followed, and that procedure is that the superintendent recommends, the superintendent recommends to the board his choice for a principal, and the board then votes on it. Now, after, after the process of interviewing these four candidates, once again, the committee selected two, and those names were presented to the superintendent. It was then his responsibility to bring to the board his recommendation, which he did. The board supported that recommendation, and that's where we are tonight.
Good evening. I've got to echo some of your words still.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It comes as no surprise, it should come as no surprise to anyone, that I am aware that there are questions surrounding the selection of the MAU principal. I've heard many of the rumors, and I can only imagine the ones that I haven't heard. Tonight I'd like to set out the facts as I know them, speaking to the process used to select the new principal, and I appreciate that this is repetitive of some of you, but it's worth repeating. That meeting, the first meeting of the principal screening and interview committee was January 29th, and I did attend that first meeting. And as Tim said, the committee was made up of parents selected by the high school principal and the middle school principal, teachers selected by the teachers association, school board members selected by Tim, and administrators who volunteered to make. At that first meeting, I did attend, but I did not attend any other meetings of the committee, I was not a member of the committee. At that meeting that I did attend, I gave an overview of my expectations to the committee, and I asked them at that time to bring forth three finalists for review. But as Tim said, the pool wasn't quite as deep, he's right, I believe there were seventeen applicants, screening brought it down to five individuals, one withdrew before the interview conducted, so I know that the committee met and did the interview for. Joy Cox, the SBSU director of human resources, put together a timeline of meetings and interviews with March 18th as the date for the appointment by the MAU board. The screening committee was only one of the tools that I used to finalize the process and select one candidate. I conducted extensive interviews with both, both of the finalists in my office. One of the candidates, Mike Malloy, I knew from his work at the MAU in my time at the CDC. The other candidate, Glenda Cresto, I met for the first time in my office at her interview. Then I conducted site visits at the school where they worked, and met with pre-selected groups that included teachers, staff, students, and administrators. I provided the list of the categories of people that I wanted to meet with to both candidates, and they were allowed to select the individuals that I wanted to meet, that they wanted me to meet with when I was there. I found the site visits to be both revealing and influential in my decision. Besides background checks, I also consulted with central office administrators, I reviewed the Vermont Core leadership standards, and I used them to help me select the finalists that I felt best matched. I also worked for many MAU board members on behalf of both candidates. It was the use of all these tools that went into my decision and my recommendation. We did miss the March 18th deadline, or date that was originally set for the appointment, because I had not finished the site visits by that date, and the appointment was postponed to the April meeting. I understand that staff, teachers, and some community members had concerns around the process to hire the new principal. It was not what was expected, and their friendship and loyalty to an internal candidate is both understood, and it's not a surprise. It is difficult to move forward when you have a current principal who is so beloved, is such an accomplished leader as Sue McGuire. The candidate that I recommended to the MAU board, whom they unanimously appointed, is a strong educational leader with experience in small and large schools as a teacher, an assistant principal, principal, and educational consultant. She is well versed in proficiency-based standards for graduation, personal learning plans, professional learning communities, staff supervision, and evaluation. We have great teachers and wonderful students at the high school, and they are doing tremendous work. However, there remains challenges, there is still work to do, such as a performance gap when compared to other schools statewide. By all accounts, Sue leaves the high school in a far better place than it was before she arrived. As Sue has done, the principal's role is to provide guidance for all students, for all needs, and to support teachers in examining teaching strategies and curriculum that has a focus on student growth. I believe I have selected a principal who has, who has the strong experience to continue providing that guidance. The selection of principal is not about what makes the adults feel comfortable, it is about what is best for the students. I offer a quote attributed to Ben Franklin, "When you've finished changing, you have finished, you are finished." Change is hard, but we can't let that stop us in moving forward for the good of our students. I began the school year this year with the phrase, "Imagine the possibilities." The role of the principal is changing, it is evolving to be the educational leader, requiring a person with the skills to imagine, plan, and lead in the rapidly changing world of education. It is with great pleasure that I welcome here tonight a person who I believe possesses that vision, Glenda Cresto. So, thank you. Glenda, I'm going to turn this over for you to, I have copies of her resume, I know you thought electronically, but we may have copies, and it's enough for everybody in the audience also, so if you want to pass that out. And Glenda, at this time, is going to give a biographical statement.
So I appreciate the opportunity to join you tonight and to talk with you about my experience.
Give everybody a year back there.
I would like to say before I start that I am looking forward to working with each member of the school board, both individually and collectively, as we move forward, and I'm also very interested and eager to work with all community members and all stakeholders as we move forward. So I would be relying on each of you here tonight to make sure that you spend some time with me over the summer, telling me the story of the school, sharing your hopes for the school, sharing what your view of the strengths of the school are, so that I can truly hit the ground running as I take on the principalship of Mount Anthony Union. And so I would like each of you to make me a promise that we will have a one-on-one meeting within the next several months to really talk about your vision as well as the SBSU's. Jim asked me to start that conversation tonight by telling you a little bit about myself, and that open-ended question, "Tell us about yourself," can create some stress, thinking, "What would you like to know, what's the most important thing for you to know?" But it also provides an opportunity to look back over a pretty substantial career and seek the themes and seek the truths that I've discovered that I'll be bringing to my work here. And so with that as a starting point, I thought that I would share some of the things that I've grown to believe are fundamental and important to education, and talk a little bit about my experiences I do that. All of the educational discoveries I've made throughout my career center on two things, what's good for students and what's good for teachers. And so my first truth is related to students. At the end of the day, as I'm heading home to have dinner and connect with my partner, I want to know and look back on every move I made as empowering students to dream and dream big about his or her future. I want to make sure that every student's life I impact has an opportunity to open any door they want to open in their life. And that means making, making sure that they become powerful readers, writers, and mathematicians, but it also is vital that they become effective problem solvers, effective decision makers, and effective collaborators. And one of the truths I've discovered is those soft skills, decision-making, problem-solving, collaboration, are taught less through the academic disciplines and more through the real-life application of what students learn. And I learned that truth in high schools. One, my own, when I was a high school student, I struggled, and my family had moved when we were, when I was in ninth grade. I started school at a new, very large high school. There were 500 people in my graduating class, and I walked into that school on the first day and knew no one. I struggled to find a niche, I struggled to fit in, and finally found myself working with the theater program. And that's where I felt welcomed, but the things I learned in that program, decision-making, problem-solving, how do we make the set fit on the stage, what is the real meaning of this play, all the things I did in that theater I loved began to play out in my academic classes. I noticed that my writing became more effective, and so did my teachers. I noticed that I could discuss the theme of a novel, and so did my teachers. I noticed that I could work with people in class and make meaning of text, and so did my teachers. And I learned how to do those things by applying what I was learning in my classes to what I loved, and that was theater. So truth number one, real-life application of learning matters, and it's valuable to students. I also noticed that the more and the harder I worked on extracurricular plays, the more I was engaged in my history class, in my English class, and in school. And I really believe that the niche I found in that school kept me in school, and it kept me engaged. So when it came time for me to choose my career path, I chose initially anthropology, because I love trying to figure out puzzles of humankind, but ultimately I chose theater education, because I knew I wanted to teach. And I went and gathered my first master, an MFA in theater education from Boston University, and wound up building a very large extracurricular and curricular theater program at a large regional high school in Massachusetts. And I noticed in my students who were running the theater program, we did six fully mounted shows a year, and it was largely student-run, student-produced, often producing their work, the plays they had written, as well as plays by the masters. I noticed a similar thing in them. They were also in all of my classes here and there throughout their high school career. So I was teaching theater, I taught English, I taught an anthropology course as a history elective, I taught health and human development and public speaking. And I noticed that the students who were running the theater program were very powerful problem solvers in class. They could discuss and debate an issue in a very professional way that allowed everyone to make meaning from their ideas. They were solid writers, they were solid readers, they had analytical skills, and I also noticed they were more engaged in getting the content of anthropology when we were digging, and when they were working as anthropologists. I noticed in English that if I assigned a typical five-paragraph analytic essay about a book they didn't really care about, I would get the essay, and maybe it, maybe they'd spent 45 minutes at most working on it, but if we were publishing the literary magazine, I would get draft after draft after draft, application of their learning in the real world. My students in public speaking planned freshman orientation every year, and they largely did the whole thing. And that was months in the planning, and along the way, we were doing other things as well. We were debating political issues, we were doing speeches of demonstration, we were doing informative research speeches. And when we were working on freshman orientation, their research speeches on something entirely unrelated to freshman orientation were higher quality. And again, they taught me that real-life application of learning not only engages them and connects them to content in ways they could only imagine, but it also develops those soft skills that are so important in our 21st century world. As we all know, today, all the information that I used to teach is available to kids in five seconds on the internet. They can research anything and amass the information of the world. It's what they do with it that matters. And those soft skills are, I think, really solidly developed through the real-world application, and through their discoveries, and their active making of meaning. So one of the things that I bring with me to this principalship is that sensibility of making sure that kids are growing powerful in class and have as many opportunities as we can create to apply their knowledge to real-world situations. The second truth I discovered, I also discovered in high schools, the high school where I was teaching theater and developing the theater program and working with students in anthropology and public speaking, I also became a mentor teacher, and I began to mentor as an experienced teachers, teachers that were brand-new to the field. And some of them came in and really struggled with things like student engagement and classroom management. And some of them grew in effectiveness through gaining experience, through mentoring, and became highly effective teachers, and then they left, and they went to medical school, or they went to law school, or they went and started a family and decided to quit teaching. And I saw about, when I had been at Quavon about six years, I saw some of the most highly effective colleagues that I had been engaged with begin to walk out the door in June and decide to quit teaching. And I began to wonder, "What's going on? These people are great teachers, they're exactly the people we want to see in the classroom, and what about this profession is driving them away?" And so as I was pondering the loss of my colleagues, I read a book called Who's Teaching Your Children by Vivian Trone and Catherine Vos. And the book talked about reimagining the teaching profession. And that book sent me back to graduate school, because I really wanted to figure out, "How can I, as an educator, keep great teachers teaching?" And so I spent two years back in graduate school, exploring teacher leadership, and ultimately deciding I wanted to be the principal who empowered teacher leadership. And so I spent an extra year in the principal licensure program. And through that year, I worked with ten brand-new teachers at a large high school in Brookline, Massachusetts, and I spent the year researching their experience. I was with them every step of the way, they trusted me, they shared their struggles with me, we celebrated their successes, and at the end of the year, eight of those ten teachers were invited back for a second year. And I want to make it clear, I was a researcher, I was just logging their experience, I was not mentoring them. What I noticed as a researcher is the two people who were not invited back had one thing in common. They had panicked early on in the fall, and had literally closed their classroom door. When their mentor offered to come and observe their classes and to, you know, help out and help them problem solve, they said no. The eight who made it went everywhere they could possibly go to get feedback and support, and their effectiveness grew and grew and grew. And that experience and Kitty and Vivian's book, Who's Teaching Your Children, really drove home for me that teaching is an incredibly complex and important task, and it has to be collaborative. It's very hard to increase your effectiveness or to figure out what your next steps are to help a student learn if there's only one brain involved in that thinking. If you have colleagues that you can go and say, "Look at this, what do I do now?" Or, "Wow, you should have been in my class today, we've had this amazing Socratic seminar, now what?" If you can do that with colleagues, your effectiveness grows. And schools until very recently have not been structured to enable that collaboration. Currently, I'm working at a small junior-senior high school in Richford, Vermont, which is two hours, two miles from the Canadian border. And one of the reasons I chose to go there is because the principal had figured out how to do a master schedule that enabled teachers to meet with their colleagues every day. And it was, it made an amazing difference in looking at student work, in puzzling through what our next steps are to improve student learning and engagement. And it really proved to me that the best support we can give teachers, and this is truth number two, is time and their colleagues, and some direction in professional development that is meaningful and meets them where they are. And so the other thing that I bring to Mount Anthony Union is experience with working with teacher collaboration, in working with two nationally recognized teacher preparation programs, the Boston Teacher Residency Program and the Harvard Teacher Training Program as an advisor and mentor. And those two professional experiences enabled me to really see a ton of teaching and really hone my ability to support teachers in growing in effectiveness. In education today, we hear constantly about creating cultures of continuous improvement, and that there's always room for growth in students and in teachers, and I believe that. I believe great teachers, effective teachers are made, they're not born. I believe that everyone, students and teachers, with the right supports can get smarter. And that's what I pledge to do as a principal. I have, over my career, played with a lot of professional development, and the most effective professional development tool I've found is teacher instructional rounds. And I've been working with teacher instructional rounds over the last four years in Richford, and we have found that teachers watching each other in a non-evaluative way and puzzling through a problem of practice together, and looking at student work together, and deciding on next steps together, has been more powerful in changing the instructional culture in our school than any national conference, and than any one-shot teacher development opportunity elsewhere. And the research does bear that up. And so I would love, and I'm very excited about, working with a leadership team at the high school to really take a look at what the professional needs are of the teachers, and figuring out how we do this in ways that will excite everybody, because it should be exciting, it shouldn't be a chore. So, the third truth about me is, and I think it's probably shown, I hope it's shown, I think you could probably guess at this point, the third truth about me is I'm absolutely passionate about ensuring the growth of students and teachers. And that's what I've chosen to do with my life's work, and I bring that enthusiasm and that, I guess, love to my work at Mount Anthony Union, and I'm looking forward to getting started. And I thank everyone for this opportunity. I know that this has not been an easy time at the high school or within the community. And I want you to know that I truly appreciate this opportunity, and I truly honor the work that Sue has done, that Mike has done, that Jeremy has done, and that Mike has done over the years to really build that school. And I look forward to meeting all of you and to learning more, and to moving us forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I'd like to open the comments now, if there are comments. I would appreciate it if you would identify yourself, and just, if you have a particular question for a particular person, please address it to that person. If it's just a general question, one of us will try to answer it. If any board member would like to jump in, feel free to do so. Are there any comments or questions? Are there any comments or questions?
Oh, I guess I do.
Good, thank you.
So the mic can hear you.
Where the two tables join.
Thank you, Donna. Hi, I'm Jeannie Jenkins, and I am the proud parent of two MAU grads. I'm a community member, I've been here for twenty-five years, so I'm still Flatlander, but I consider myself Benettonian. I am also, I also work at the Community College, and so, I spend a lot of, every one of my days either working with high school students who are doing dual enrollment, MAU, it leads the state in numbers of students doing dual enrollment, and we have forty-nine students this semester, yay, in dual enrollment courses. The other part of my day is spent generally working on workforce development issues. What I want to talk about today, and I apologize to those of you who've already, I've already bent your ear, I see several of you here, is really about an opportunity that's been missed in this community. It has, I don't have any vested interest in, I didn't have any vested interest in who the candidate might be, who the candidates were, who the candidate that was chosen was. What I really have real concern about is the process. And, and I really want to make, I really want to make public comment about the process going forward. This is a community that is, that is in the process of changing. What, for many years, having a high school diploma was sufficient to get a high-paying job in this community. When I moved here, we still had a lot of union manufacturing jobs, and folks were making a lot more than I am, and those jobs have all gone away. Now, an associate degree has replaced a high school diploma, and I know you know that. I think your job is the second-most important one in town. Jim has the most importance. I do believe the superintendent's position says the school is the community, the values work back and forth, the values of the community are the values of the school, and vice versa. And I think the principal of the high school has a very, very significant role in this community. Having said that, I think that what we missed in this, we missed it twice. We missed it in the superintendent's search, and we've missed it in your search, and both of those happening within one year, is an opportunity to engage the community. This is a community that has not had the opportunity to think about, what is it that we see for our community? What is our vision? We've not had an opportunity to sit down together and say, "Where do we see ourselves in ten years? Are we looking for rapid change? Are we looking for long-term change? What is it that's important to us? Is it important that our kids are all college-bound? Is it important that we have a stronger tech center? Is it important to us that we have all of our kids doing internships? What is it that we care about? We have not had that conversation." The lack of transparency in this search in particular has, I think, hurt this community. We had an opportunity, I mean, we have resumes here today. Why the heck, why the heck didn't we have resumes for all five of the candidates that were, that were interested in this position? Why was the community not brought into this process? Glenda, I found your resume on, on the web, because another supervisory union had put your resume up there for the whole community to see. How ironic. So, and, you know, and it was a current resume. So, but why was the, why was the community not given the opportunity to engage in this process of this most important position? So, I'm really speaking to the board, I mean, more than Glenda, I realize, but the, you know, I think it would've been great to have heard the board's vision. What do you see as important in the next principal? What do you see as, you know, where we want to see ourselves in ten years? Do we see a principal, do we see a need to have a principal that's going to be in that position for ten years? Two years, five years, fifty years? I mean, you have big shoes to fill, and you know that.
I know that.
You know, Sue is the best. I think that we didn't have those conversations beforehand. I think it is incumbent on us to have those conversations now, that as we move forward, it is not okay for a small group of people to be making the decisions about what this community does, because this school reflects the community, it determines who moves here, it determines who sends their kids here. We have two affluent communities that are on the north, to the north and the south of us, and people that have the opportunity to decide where their kids are going to go to school have the opportunity to make choices. And it's not always this school. And I think that we want to have a community conversation about what makes this a school the best school that it can be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your words, and I'm sure that what you've said will be discussed. I can assure you that the board will consider what you have said, and will have an opportunity to move forward in that general way. Are there any other comments that people would like to make? Are you sure? Yes.
I have one quick comment for the banner. I thought the presentation was very well-done, and informs the community, and published the story of it. I know that CAT TV puts a link out for their, for their broadcast, can you include that link in the story so that people can
Yeah, definitely.
...watch it and get the full story beyond the number of words that the editors have all along to write.
We have that technology.
Don't take it away from Derek, that's
I'm betting it's you.
No, no, no.
Any other board member, or any member of the community like to make a comment? Nathan?
Carry on that same vein. I think it's unfortunate that this meeting came upon so quickly. You know, I complained earlier on about, you know, board meetings used to be on Mondays, and then board meetings were Wednesdays, and the board meeting where I missed the executive session was on Tuesdays, and now we have a board meeting on Thursdays. And I think that gives anybody pause to join the board, if it's going to be in a situation where they're expected to be available any day of the week, you know? And the fact that we had expected to meet Glenda the twentieth, and not today, you know, is that much less lead time to get the community involved and get the community informed to be this new principal.
We wanted to move ahead. The central office called each board member and asked each board member what would be a convenient date for, for this meeting. We also had to take into consideration Glenda's schedule, and that's why this meeting was called. We picked the date that was the most convenient for the most board members, as well as for Glenda.
But relating back to what Jeannie said, it's more, it's important to do more than the board. You know, you think it's adequate for the board to have been contacted, but the community has to have some lead time too. The responsibility to include the community, give them the opportunity to have a part in this.
That's a very good point. And we do, meetings are warned, this, this meeting was warned two weeks ago, I think. But what you say is, you know, certainly has a good deal of truth to it.
I just can't stop myself. Can I ask one question? Was this warned two weeks ago? Because I
Well, this was more, this was more than an education meeting, two weeks ago.
An education committee meeting.
Right. And then we thought, just because we wanted to get more people involved in it, we rewarned it, it was the same time, same thing, as a full board meeting.
I don't think it was two, I think it was last week it was warned as an education meeting.
Was it last week? I thought it was.
Was it last week, or was it Tuesday when that actually was up on the web?
No, this Tuesday, that's when, that's when this latest agenda, but it was, it's the same meeting, we just changed
I don't know what day it was, but it wasn't, it was not two weeks ago, that's for sure.
Well, it was, well, it was last, it was the week before this, anyway.
Yeah, but thank you, Nathan, I think that is a very good point. I mean, I think, you know, very few people here, and I think, had the community known that the new principal was going to be here today, I think people would've wanted to have laid eyes on you.
Sure. Well, maybe we can, we can do something about that on a meeting on the twentieth.
I do think that part of that was a desire to bring Glenda here as quickly as possible, but we acknowledge that, and probably will have her at the meeting on the twentieth too, if you're, I don't know if you're available, but, because that is the regular scheduled meeting. So, what, my understanding of what transpired was a desire to bring Glenda forward as soon as possible, but there really, there wasn't a lot of warning on that, no.
I'm assuming we're going to have an open house, anyway, and have the whole community just come and meet her, anyway, right?
Yeah, that's the point.
So, we all talk freely?
Yeah, in a more, you know, social environment, less structured.
Yeah.
And Jenny, before you leave tonight, I would love to get your contact information, because I have an idea about how we could begin that conversation that you were talking about, and really, maybe we could get together and really plan it, and I'll share my idea with you, and we can move forward that way.
All right, very good. Nathan?
One other comment on the procedure, you know, the, I've been at the board since nineteen eighty-eight, and I've never seen education committee meeting transition into a full board meeting. It seems like a kind of sleight of hand, it just didn't seem quite like, and also, of course, the fact that the school, I also have never been in an executive committee meeting where we, you know, chose a principal or anybody else. That particular part of the procedure that happened this time, I find unprecedented.
Very good. We've done it before, but we're not going to get into that, and you were certainly invited to be at that meeting and receive several notices.
Oh, you mean that executive session?
Yes.
Well, that was the thing I mentioned before, you know, meetings, no, should I skip my yoga class, as silly as that may seem? Or, like tonight, I should've been at the board meeting for the Greater Benetton Peace and Justice Act, but suddenly the meeting's on.
Okay, are there any other comments people would like? Nelson?
I should note that your final warning of this meeting was really a warning for a special meeting, and that's what it was specifically specified at. It wasn't specified as an educational board meeting, it was a special meeting, which has different rules on how it's warned, and so forth, and it's unfortunate that it's hard to notify the public in any better way than we're doing now, but the real thing is, is, you know, maybe that's something we should explore. You know, we talk about the newspaper putting a link to CAT TV, we might want to make sure all of our meetings are, they come and show them after we meet, maybe we want to make sure they're all on it before we meet, that people are looking at that. We need to explore that to make sure that more people understand when we are meeting and how we meet.
Good point.
It is difficult, note that the last meeting was a Tuesday, because the board did not wish to meet during school vacation week, and there are no other Wednesdays open, because all the other boards meet on Wednesday. So, once you don't hold your meeting in a Wednesday, there are no Wednesdays left.
Dave?
To that point, I'm not sure, Jim, that the board didn't want to meet during school vacation week, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be arrogant, but we never meet during school vacation week. I don't ever recall the board being pulled to see whether they liked the idea, I always assumed that
Yeah, I don't I said I was available to meet that day, I could've done the Wednesday, but I don't know honestly how
It always causes a problem with the scheduling, it'd be another problem next time if you're on
Next time, if I can, once
Maybe we should just stick with the third Wednesday.
That's, those meetings are scheduled by the board, it's up the agenda, and we can certainly do that, Dave, good, good point. Are there any other comments?
Just one quick one, so that nobody misunderstands, any member of the public misunderstands. The board met in executive session because state law requires that when you're discussing personnel actions. You can't take an action in an executive session, you have to discuss it within the executive session, and then go into an open session, take the action. I'm not sure that is clear to everybody.
Thank you, Ed. If there are no other questions, I just ask for a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I do have some resumes here, if anybody in the public back there would like to
And Glenda will be here for a while, so feel free to mingle.
Good.